Welcome, everyone. This is the Wednesday, September 16th, 2020 meeting of the Franklin Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state local emergency due to ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that public attendance at this meeting would pose a risk to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. As a result, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers. Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting to the township's special newspaper, the current site, and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation, which is linked to the virtual meeting. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website at or appointment in the municipal building. Formal action will be taken at this virtual meeting. A reminder to board members, we ask that you refrain from asking questions until the applicant has presented all witnesses and exhibits. I will open the floor to board questions after the applicant is done presenting. In order to reduce potential background noise, we ask that you mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. For public input, for those members of the public that are watching via WebEx, please indicate in the chat section whether you desire to provide input. Please provide your name and address at the appropriate time. The township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you'll have the opportunity to provide comment. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number, same rules apply. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will unmute the phone lines, and we ask that you take your turn in providing your input. You will be asked to provide your name and address. With that, we can do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its indivisibility with liberty, justice, and
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Coral Howe? Mahir Rafi?
One second to unmute her.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Cecilia Diver? Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Thank you.
Mustafa Mansray? Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Carol Schmidt? You have to unmute yourself.
But I'm here.
We got you. And Chairman Orsini?
Here. Thanks, Christine. First order of business is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 5th, 2020.
Both to approve.
I will second.
Coral Howe?
Yes.
Mahir Rafi?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yeah. Okay, so we have, I guess, no resolutions and no discussion items, so we can move right into general public comments. This is for comments not related to any hearings on the agenda tonight. That would be Crestwood Properties and Act of Esti Belmont. Those will have public hearings dedicated to those topics alone. So this is for public comment on any planning issue unrelated to those two hearings. And with that, I make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the meeting is now open to the public for general planning comment.
Okay, so I'm going to unmute the, all of the attendees. If you have any general planning comments, you can make them at this point. Okay, so I've unmuted the callers from the attendees. Anybody wish to make any general planning comments to the planning board?
I have a question.
Hearing any? Somebody speaking?
Casavado?
Okay, do you have something you wish to bring to the board's attention? Not related to one of these applications?
That's what I'm saying. So my question would be for a notice I received, so would that go for what's coming up next?
It's, so we have two hearings. One is for Crestwood Properties. That's a subdivision on Amwell Road, and another is a warehouse on Belmont. There are two hearings, and there'll be public comment periods for those hearings later.
Okay, I'll wait for that. That's the one I want to talk about.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to make any general planning comments, not on the applications later on the agenda? Okay, so I'm going to mute the callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so seeing no public comment in the general comment section, I move the hearing be closed to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we'll move on to the hearings, the first of which is Crestwood Properties, LN20-00001.
Before I bring in their experts, I just also wanted to remind the public that there's, in addition to the chat section, for those that are calling in, they can press star three on their phones, and that'll raise their hand and alert staff that you wish to comment. Also, in, for those participating via WebEx, there's also a raised hand function, and you can press that. And again, at the appropriate time, I can unmute you, and you can ask your questions or comments to the board on the application. So with that said, I'll bring in the applicants, the representatives for Crestwood Properties. Mr. Lanfrith? Mr. Ford? And Mr. Lanfrith, if you could unmute yourself. I have you and Michael Ford at this point. Do you also want me to bring in anybody else at this point?
You can unmute Mr. O'Brien.
Okay, so I'll make him a panelist as well. Anybody else?
I do have my clients. I probably will not have to call them, but we can always unmute them later in the event that I need to call them. But right now, I only intend to call Mr. Ford and Mr. O'Brien.
Okay, so they're both in, so you can start.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanfrith appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for Crestwood Properties, which is a property located at 1593 Amwell Road, Lot 386.02, Lot 19, within the R20 zone. The purpose of this application is to request of this board a minor subdivision approval to create two lots, one being a flag lot for the purpose of constructing two single-family dwellings. The property in question is 50,000 square feet. The, there are some variances that we will be seeking. They are set forth in the report of Mr. Healy. I will briefly review them. First of all, flag lots are not permitted in the R20 zone, so that is a variance. They are only permitted, are only permitted in the R40, R3, R5, and A zones. The other variance that we are seeking is that the buildable portion of the flag, of the lot in the rear should be 30,000 square feet. Our lot is 30,000 square feet with the flag pole, but only 25,000 square feet in the buildable portion. So that is a variance. And the width of the flag pole, we're seeking 25 feet as opposed to 30 feet that is required. Mr. Healy identified two other variances, one being that an access easement is not proposed on the plan. We will be providing an access easement so that there is one shared driveway to both properties, so there will not be a variance, and we will not be seeking that variance. Also, Mr. Healy identified that the buffering that we did provide is noncompliant with the ordinance, and we need additional buffering. We will be providing that additional buffering to make the buffering compliant with the ordinance, so that is not a variance that we will be seeking. Having said all of that, I will call as my first witness, Mr. Ford.
Ford, you raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, Van Cleef Engineering, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Mr. Healy, are we going to give Mr. Ford control of the exhibits so he can use them in presenting his testimony?
Yes, I can do that right now.
Thank you. Mr. Ford, what is your occupation?
I'm a licensed engineer.
In the state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
Okay, and can you briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
I've appeared before this board numerous times in the past, so...
Mr. Ford, this is Chairman Orsini. So as, as long as your license is in good standing in New Jersey, Mr. Ford has appeared beyond before this board numerous times, so I would accept him as, as a witness in his capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Orsini. Mr. Ford, you and your firm prepared the subdivision plan, which is the subject of this application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and can you describe the subject property? And if there are exhibits that you wish to refer to, you can put them up on the screen and use them as you're talking through your testimony.
Okay. Yeah, I've shared with everyone the, on the screen, the existing condition plan, which is actually on the township website, so it was provided in advance of the hearing. What you see on this exhibit is Amwell Road or County Route 514 along the left or edge, you know, the, the southern track boundary. The 50,000-square-foot lot is highlighted in yellow. We have our immediate adjoining residential uses shown with the aerial on the plan, and you can see that the existing site conditions are predominantly wooded area.
All right, Mr. Ford, is there also another undeveloped portion or strip of land adjacent to our property?
Yes, along the easterly portion of our property, between our single-family residential house neighbor, there's a 25-foot strip of land known as Lot 18.01.
Okay, and that 25?
Essentially, essentially an undevelopable piece of property.
Okay, and it's 25 feet by the entire length of our property and runs, it runs along the easterly side of our property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you indicate to the board what we are proposing to do with respect to this property?
Okay, I'll go to the next exhibit.
Why don't we, why don't we, Mr. Ford, for reference, we'll call the first one A1. We're moving to A2. I know you provided them ahead of time, but it'll just give us an easy designation.
Certainly.
Thanks.
Yeah, A2 is a colorized version of the minor subdivision plan that was provided as part of the application, still showing that aerial image of the surrounding property uses, Amwell Road along the left, and what's shown, colorized, is the proposed condition as Mr. Lanfrith described in the introduction. It would be a single access driveway along the pole portion of the flag lot, which is the rear lot, to access that proposed dwelling, and that same driveway would be utilized to access the front lot, which is a 20,000-square-foot lot. The rear lot would be a 30,000-square-foot lot, and the flag pole is 25 feet wide.
And Mr. Ford, the, the front lot is fully compliant with the zone requirements of the R20 zone?
Yes.
And a single-family dwelling can be constructed thereon, meeting all of the bulk requirements of the R20 zone, all setback requirements. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and can you basically point out to the board, I know it's a little bit hard to see, but what the building envelope is for the front lot?
I'm tracing it with the pointer right now.
So that whole area would be available for residential development?
Yes.
Okay, and now going back to the rear lot, you indicated that the rear lot is 30,000 square feet. However, what is the buildable area outside of the flag pole?
That would be the 25,000 square feet, which I'm highlighting now.
Okay, which again exceeds the R20 zone requirements, but is deficient to the standards of a flag lot, correct?
Right, in the township ordinance, where flag lots are permitted, the required area is one and a half times the underlying, you know, required area.
Okay, and again, for the benefit of the board, can you point out what the buildable area is for the rear portion of the lot, meeting all of the setback requirements?
And I'm highlighting the buildable, the building envelope, if you will.
Okay, and so a house can easily be built on there, meeting all of the R20 requirements again, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is this property, and if this project were to be approved, will these houses be serviced by public water and public sewer?
Yes.
Okay, and all of the utilities will be accessed or down the driveway, and there'll be utility easements for both houses, so both houses can, can get the utilities, is that correct?
That's our expectation, correct, yes.
Did you, in preparing your plan, take into consideration any stormwater management?
Yes, we've shown drywells on the properties. We've done onsite soil testing, and we've actually already received comments, you know, from the town, the board professional with some requested changes to that stormwater management system, and we would implement all those changes to their satisfaction as a condition of any approval the board made.
Okay. Now, you also indicated in your opening that the lot is fairly heavily wooded. Can you indicate what we are doing regarding an attempt to preserve as many of the trees as possible, and what we're going, going to do about adding trees as a result of the trees that we have to remove?
Yes, this plan does, the, the exhibit highlights the colorized version as the proposed area of limit of disturbance. So that portion of the property beyond the colorized version, where you see the aerial image of natural woods, it would not be disturbed. And with regards to plantings, we provided a tree mitigation plan with account of what the required tree mitigation plantings would be, as well as the onsite trees that are proposed. And as indicated in one of the review reports issued by the township staff, there, the difference between those trees provided onsite and required would be taken care of in a contribution to the tree fund. And then with regards to plantings, we did receive comments regarding the buffer plantings along the driveway, which is immediately adjacent to that 25-foot-wide vacant lot to our east. You can see we're proposing a row of trees along the driveway and that easterly property line now, which doesn't quite comply with the flag pole landscaping screening requirements, as pointed out in one of the staff reports, and we would make changes to the plan so that that, that landscape screening would comply with the township requirements for screening along the flag pole driveway.
Okay, now...
That's landscaping.
Okay, the driveway that is going to be constructed, is there any stormwater management provided on the plan and/or requested by staff?
Yes, the, the staff suggested that rather than have oversized drywells that compensate for the driveway, that we have implemented a separate system. That is a roof system that takes care of the roofs and a separate system for the driveways, and we will make those changes.
Okay, and how would you address the driveway if you're not putting it into the proposed drywells? What are our options?
Well, well, first, it should be noted that because the project is small and the area of disturbance is minimal, that is less than an acre, less than a quarter acre of new and pervious, we're not a major stormwater management project. We're a minor project, and the township ordinance, and that, and that designation of minor makes the project exempt from the DNR Canal Commission, which we've confirmed in writing with them. But the township ordinance does require infiltration for the impervious surfaces, and with regards to the driveway, we would provide either porous pavement with an infiltration stone bed under it, or swales immediately adjacent to the driveway. That is infiltration swales immediately adjacent to the driveway.
Okay. Mr. Ford, you've had an opportunity to review the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes.
And we've touched on some of the comments contained in the reports, but with respect to the remaining comments in the CME report, can we comply with all of their requested changes or modifications?
Yes.
And if we comply with those changes or modifications, will they in any way significantly alter what the, the board is looking at this evening?
No.
Okay, and with respect to Mr. Healy's comments, we will have planning testimony concerning the variances, but you've already touched on the tree removal, and we are going to provide the easements that are requested by Mr. Healy, is that correct?
Yes, and then one other agency review that Mr. Healy requests that we provide documentation for is the NJDEP Freshwater Wetland Letter of Interpretation, and the applicant has secured an absence determination, that is, no wetlands or wetland buffers on the property dated May 1st, 2019, and we can provide the township with a copy of that.
For, for the record, I have it in front of me. It's actually March 1st, 2019, and either we mark it as an exhibit, or I can just provide it to Mr. Healy as part of our submission package, whichever you would prefer.
I think if you provide it as a condition of approval, it would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Vignalo. I have no further questions of Mr. Ford. Before I call Mr. O'Brien, there is one additional comment that was raised concerning the 25-foot strip and the history of the strip, and whether we could or could not acquire that strip, and I, I think it's relevant to the presentation. And I do have, and I'll, through the history of 2016, after my client purchased the property, he searched the records of the municipality, and it was determined at that time that the property was owned by Flama Construction Corp. of Highland Park, which some of you may or may not know was, is company owned by the late Mr. Reader. My client entered into a contract to purchase that strip from Mr. Reader, and then upon subsequent investigation, it was found out that Mr. Reader did not own property. There was then further investigation that was done, and it appears that the strip was owned by two individuals. If you give me a second. Adam Chase and Joseph Anka, both deceased. And upon doing further investigation, this was done by my clients through their real estate attorney. It was found out that, that there were heirs to those people. There were about six or seven of them, and none of them wanted to get involved in trying to gather up all the heirs to sell the property. So my clients, although they have made efforts to acquire that strip, have been unable to do so. I will mark the contract that we entered into with Flama as a three in evidence, and can indicate that, I think, our latest research is that the taxes have not been paid on this property, so there may be an opportunity for my client to acquire the strip if the township ever gets it through a tax sale, and then we can make it part of the project and widen that, that driveway and meet it, make it compliant. But at this point in time, we have really reached the end of the line as far as trying to acquire that property. Having said that, I will move on to my next witness, Mr. O'Brien.
Good evening, Mr. Lanfrith.
Mr. O'Brien, if you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien, what is your occupation?
I am a licensed professional planner licensed by the state of New Jersey.
And have you previously testified before this board and the zoning board in Franklin Township and numerous other boards around the state of New Jersey?
I have had that pleasure, yes.
I would offer the testimony that Mr. O'Brien is a professional planner.
Is accepted, Peter.
Okay, as a matter of fact, I think your last appearance before this board a couple months ago was on a different flag lot application, was it not?
It was indeed, yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. O'Brien, you're familiar with the subject property, the surrounding land uses, the master plan of the Township of Franklin, and the zoning ordinance of the Township of Franklin, are you not?
I am. I do want to make sure, can everybody hear me? Is my volume loud enough?
Yes, you're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Even though I sort of covered it in my opening, can you, for the record, indicate why we are here this evening?
Yes, the applicant has applied for subdivision approval and for creation of a flag lot in the R20 zone. As you've read in Mr. Healy's report, there are a number of variances that go with the creation of the flag lot.
And can you describe the subject property before you go into the justification and the, and the variances that we're seeking? Can you describe the subject property and the surrounding land uses?
Yes, the property is 50,000 square feet in an R20 zone, which requires 20,000 square feet. It's 125 square feet wide, and it is surrounded by properties that conform to the R20 standards, except for the land strip next door, and this is considerably larger than any of the adjacent properties.
Okay, now, can you indicate the relief that we are seeking from the board?
Yes, there are several variances that go along with the flag lot proposal. Mr. Healy's identified them on page two of his application. One is the flag lot, flag lock subdivision. One is the flag rock, flaglock subdivisions are not allowed in the R twenty. Variance is required because twenty-five thousand square feet are proposed. In the buildable portion of. Of the proposed lot and thirty thousand square feet are required. The flag pole is supposed to be thirty feet where twenty-five feet are proposed. And Mr. Healy identified the lack of an easement, which we are now conforming with. As well as proposed plantings are not entirely evergreens, which we are also now conforming with.
Thank you, and can you in. Discuss the variances that we are seeking with respect to this subject property and provide to the board reasons and or justifications for those variances?
Certainly. As the board is aware, flag lots are not allowed in the R twenty zone. A twenty thousand square foot lot. That's required in the R twenty. Is, I think when the governing body and the planning board decided that this was going to be a regulation. I don't think anybody could imagine creating a flag lot on a twenty thousand square foot lot. This lot is. Peculiar and unique. In that it has over, it has fifty thousand square feet of lot area. Over twice as much as what is required in the R twenty zone. This provides both the required lot area and lot width for the front property and the rear property, except for the flag, of course. The front house is going to look like any other property in the area. It will completely meet all the area and setback requirements. Nothing's going to indicate a flag lot looking at the front of this house from the street. Thirty thousand square feet required for the flag lot comes about because the minimum lot area. Shall be one point five times the lot area required in the zone. Twenty thousand is required. In the R twenty, so thirty thousand square feet of lot area are required for the flag lot. The flag lot does give thirty thousand feet altogether. And twenty-five thousand square feet of that is buildable. To somebody taking a look at this from afar, I doubt if they would really be able to see. That there's a difference between the twenty-five thousand and the thirty thousand. A twelve foot wide driveway will serve both homes. Along with an easement, as has been discussed for utilities. And with a twelve foot wide driveway. Anybody looking at this from the street is just going to see that regular driveway going up to the front lot. And if they look very carefully amidst the landscaping, they will see that that driveway extends further. But in terms of appearance from the street, this is going to look like an R twenty property from the street. The flag pole width is supposed to be thirty feet wide. And recall that this standard is for a forty thousand square foot lot. A twenty-five foot wide flag pole with the twelve foot wide driveway fits in much better in this neighborhood. Most adjoining driveways are twelve feet wide. To have a larger corridor will draw more attention to the flag lot. And make this property appear different from others in the neighborhood. A visual buffer of evergreens is being provided along the eastern lot line. So as I've indicated, no variance is required for that. And as you can see from the aerial view and from Mr. Ford's testimony. The property is currently heavily wooded and it is going to continue to be heavily wooded and undisturbed. On the western and northern property lines. So that will continue to provide a significant buffer to adjoining properties. If one was looking for a very isolated and very buffered place. To put a flag lot, this is one of those very unique places. The application also provides stormwater retention. This is a feature that the older homes in this area do not provide. That's a benefit for everybody. The board is quite aware that each application for a variance has to prove that their unique circumstances. Are applicable to the application and acceptable to the board. They're different for each lot. An applicant can't come to the board and say, hey, you gave this variance to Harry. How come I can't get one? When, of course. Neighbors are different, properties are different, circumstances are different. They've got to be able to prove that there are unique circumstances. I'm sure that the board in the midst of their preparing for this application. Took a look at the tax map, which is at the upper right corner of the. Exhibit that Mr. Ford has presented. Mike, is it possible to enlarge just that tax map area of the exhibit? Thank you very much, Mr. Ford. And as board members were looking at this, I'm sure they recognize that there are some. Some similar properties in terms of size in the area. And I took a look at those because I do want the board to realize that. This is a very unique lot and though although there are some that may appear similar. They do not have the same unique characteristics of this application. And may or may not qualify for. Relief as a flag lot, depending, of course, upon the board. You take a look at block eighty-seven oh five, which is at the left. Thank you very much, Mr. Ford, on the left-hand side of Amwell. Lot four point oh one is an already configured, very oddly configured flag lot. Lot six, a little bit further down. The location of the home in the middle of the lot makes. Any further division very difficult to do. Lot eight oh one also has a centrally positioned home on the lot. And lot seven oh three, a little bit further to the east, is already a flag lot. On block three eighty-six oh two, on the right side of Amwell, where the where this property is located. Lot eighteen oh one, the one just adjacent to is. Is, of course, substandard, cannot be made into a flag lot. Lot seventeen, a little bit to our south, a little bit to our east, excuse me. Is, the house is more centrally located and only has one hundred feet of width. So they would not be able to accommodate the flag pole. And further up Amwell to the west is the flag lock for the school between Colony and Newton. I think that. Showing the board the unique aspects of this application is something that will help you make a decision on this.
Mr. O'Brien, does the master plan give the board any guidance concerning this application?
Sure, the twenty sixteen reexamination states as a goal, quote. Maintain the diversity of housing. But encourage infill and stabilization of current residential areas. Rather than continuing sprawl patterns of development. And it goes on to state, encourage new construction and renovation in developed areas. And encourage the subdivision of larger lots into conforming lots. In appropriate locations in developed areas. This application meets these goals by providing infill housing that conforms to the character of the neighborhood. This very large vacant lot is in the middle of a number of developed properties. And certainly qualifies as infill.
Does the application support any of the purposes of the municipal land use law?
Yes, the MLUL in section forty colon fifty-five D dash two. Lists the purposes of zoning. And this application does meet these goals, goal A. To encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state. In a manner which will promote the public health, safety and general welfare. Item G, provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of residential uses. In order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. L, promote a desirable visual environment. And M, encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities. Shaping land development and to the more efficient use of land. And I believe that this application is consistent with those passages. By providing new homes that conform to all current building codes. Provide stormwater detention. They keep the existing character of the neighborhood. And the existing pattern of development on properties that will be well buffered by proposed and existing woodlands.
Mr. O'Brien, although we've sort of gone through Mr. Healy's report. From a planning perspective, do you want to comment on any of his comments?
Sure, just to respond to Mr. Healy, if I may. A comment number one, we're talking about page three of his report. Which is dated the fourteenth of April, twenty twenty. Item number one, there are no wetlands, we have proof of that from DEP. Item two, concerning the adjoining lot. You've heard the testimony and. Discussion by Mr. Lafferty. That the property next door is. Got to be sorted out somehow or other legally. So if they don't get it sorted out, this property remains and it's a twenty-five foot buffer. If it does get sorted out and it falls to a tax lien. The applicant can certainly acquire it. And it still serves as a twenty-five foot buffer. So either way, a twenty-five foot wide buffer is adjacent to this property. Which I think even more conforms to the neighborhood. Provides even less. Visibility as a flag lot or as a two. Two lot subdivision. So this is going to remain as a buffer and I think that's a very good thing. Item number three, the easement will be provided as required. Number four, the limit of disturbance, we agree to that. Five, the calculations of tree replacement, we agree. Item six, the co- fees, we agree.
Finally, Mr. O'Brien, have you reached a planning conclusion with respect to this application?
Yes, Mr. Lafferty. The variances meet the flexible C two standard. The benefits outweigh the detriments in that this proposal is a better planning alternative than a more conforming design. This application supports the municipal land use law and the township master plan. The proposed flag lot will be over two hundred feet from Manuel Road and well buffered. The proposed improvements will have no negative impact upon the neighborhood and surrounding properties. And I can conclude that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without substantial impairment of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, I have no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, at this point, I think I I want to remind the public. The board is going to ask the applicant questions at this point. And then after that, we'll open it up to questions and comments of the public. If you do wish to speak, you need to let me know. If you're calling in pressing star three. Or if you're on WebEx, you can do the raised hand function or indicate your desire to to speak in the chat area. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Just for the record, that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, 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 Peter. So at this point in time, entertain questions, any questions from from the board?
Yes, this is Charles, Charles Brown, I was wondering if there were any comments made or suggested made to. Continue the sidewalk on Amwell Road as a condition of approval for the variance.
It was not contemplated, but I know it's been the township's position to try to get sidewalks wherever possible. And we would be happy either, A, to provide sidewalks. Sidewalk along the front of the property or in the alternative cash contribution to. The municipality so that they have the funds to. Construct sidewalks whenever they want to do it in the future, we can do either, but we understand that you have an obligation to sidewalk.
It would be great if it was the former and not the latter, that the sidewalk be constructed at the time while the construction takes place.
I have no objection to that request.
Thanks, Charles, thank you, Peter, any other court questions for either. Mr. Ford or Mr. O'Brien? All right, well, seeing no further questions at this time, I make a motion to open this meeting to the public.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the meeting is open to the public for this application and and Mark, I see we already have one person with their hand raised, so. Go ahead and.
Okay, I see, Mr. Mark. Acevedo, hopefully I pronounced your name correctly, if you could just. Announce yourself and give your address for the board. Hold on a second. Now he's unmuted.
Okay, how are you? My name is Mark Acevedo, my address is one five nine five Amwell Road. I have a question, my my question is in regards to note number three from page one of the survey done by Christopher Melix. It states that there's no existing well located within a hundred feet of the property in question. Or observed by the engineering done on November two thousand nineteen. And my property is is not on township border, I am, I have a well on my property.
Could that be a question for Mr. Ford?
Yeah, well, which which, Mr. Acevedo, specific property are you?
I I am the property. That is right next to the twenty-five foot buffer that they're calling that that there's in question. My property.
Okay, so you're. Seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can, we can correct that note on the plan and if. We can. Perhaps get information from that owner to show the location of the well. I would say, and this is Mike Ford speaking. That that hundred foot setback is more consequence. When the proposed development includes onsite septic systems, because you don't don't want to. Install a new septic system within a hundred feet of an existing well. But since this, since this project is is going to be connected to public sewer and water. I would say that 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 hundred foot. To any well is really not of any consequence.
Okay, my my only concern would be that there would be some type of interruption or or disturbance with my well water.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Ford, do you want to answer that that part of the question?
Sorry.
Is there going to be, is there going to affect during construction on on, as you, in your professional opinion, as far as. Mr. Acevedo's well water quality, volume, et cetera?
There should be no adverse impact. And and one of the reports we didn't mention is the. The township's health department reviewed the application and had no objection.
Okay, and and if there is, I don't, I mean, I don't anticipate that, but if there is, who would I contact?
I think that any issues with your well water would be a public health issue and would be. Your recourse would be to report to the township health department.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Acevedo, I'm assuming you have no more questions or comments?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to mute you then.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll give a few more seconds if any, any other member of the public wishes to make a comment or have questions of. The applicant's professionals. This would be your last opportunity. I'm not seeing anybody else come forward, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing a no further public comment on this application, I move that the public portion be closed. If I can get a board second, that would be great.
Second.
Thanks. I'm just in favor?
Oh, that, there you go.
All right, so assuming all is, everyone is in favor, we'll close the public portion, Mark. And if there's the last answer, any other board comments? On this application?
Just one, one question, Mr. Chairman, this is Mark. Mr. Ford, the.
Mr. Ford, the, did you say that DRCC said it was, the project was exempt?
Yes.
And what was the date of that report?
We have seven twenty two thousand
Seven twenty two thousand, seven twenty, twenty twenty?
Correct.
Okay, I'm not sure we, I'm not sure we have that. I think the latest report we have is March twentieth. So if you could provide that to us, that'd be appreciated.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're, 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 you're right, Mark. The one we have is dated March, March twentieth, so we don't, we don't have that. They were evaluating and I think we have the report from Surriset County. I, I do recall during your testimony that Mr. O'Brien referenced the fact that they do have a DEP letter of, of no wetlands or wetland buffers on site. Mark, do we have a copy of that or should the applicant provide?
I, I don't believe we have it. They, the applicant absolutely should be providing it to us.
Chairman Orsini, I have a potential concern I would like to raise. It's with the twelve foot driveway. My concern is that while these residential lots may have in the future garages, we know that most people nowadays don't actually park in their garage. But also given that, in the event that they have more than two neighbors over who are visiting by car and they have to pass, have to park along this twelve foot drive strip, it would basically, basically become impassable at that point by another vehicle, signaling a concern for me from an emergency standpoint to one of the houses catch a fire. I just want to point that out.
Mike Ford speaking.
Considered how, how, Mark, from a, from a planning standpoint and with previous flag applications, what sort of the, which we addressed that actually
I, I, I think the, the comment that Charles raised is a, is a good practical comment. The ordinance doesn't require, the ordinance, I believe, has a twelve foot wide requirement. But nonetheless, I mean, I think Mr. Ford was, was about to, to address that. Why don't we hear from him and then the board can decide if they want to, you know, ask the applicant to make any modifications?
Sure.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, I was looking, Mark, as I recall, one of the review memorandums, I'm just trying to find it now, suggested that we provide no parking signs on that access lane, that access driveway.
Yeah, and that may be in response to, you know, it is a matter of enforcement. I'm not sure who enforces that because it's a private driveway. I mean, I think, I see Carl shaking his head. Nobody really is going to enforce that, but technically the ordinance does prohibit parking in the driveway. Practical prohibition, that's another issue.
Yeah, I found it. It's, it's in the CME report, item B nine. And, and I do agree, you know, from a practical standpoint, would be difficult to enforce. We do provide adequate RSIS onsite parking with the two-car garage and the pavement, you know, in front of the garage for up to four cars. I think technically it's classified as a three and a half, you know, car space provided. And I would, you know, I guess really we, we've agreed to comply with all of CME's requirements, but if the board feels it's really impractical to provide no parking signage along that lane per item B nine, perhaps that wouldn't be included as one of the requirements.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps a, a solution could be, and I know the, the board sometimes is loathe to design on the fly. What you may want to do is perhaps put a, a condition that the applicant confer with township staff, including police and fire, and find out if, if, if they have the similar concerns and if so, that they work that out with staff.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. I mean, if they're willing to place no parking signs, I agree with, I agree with that. I agree with Carl. It's probably unenforceable being a private driveway. At least, no one can say that they were not warned because obviously you don't have a wide enough driveway to have, have parking on the, on the driveway and still be able to get emergency access. So I think the signs are, are you know, fine for, for, for what they'll do. And, and if the applicant is willing to confer with township staff for how this could be, has been addressed in, in other applications, probably, probably no differently would be my, would be my guess. That would be appreciated, but you know, I'm also sensitive to the fact that, you know, this did go through the township staff review process and, and so, you know, we're not putting the applicant in double jeopardy essentially. But if, if, if they're willing to confer with township staff on how to handle that, that would be appreciated.
In terms of seeing, I just wanted to, you know, raise this concern as someone who has a respect in the community, in the transportation industry across the nation. It would not be wise for me to not point out the fact that this driveway is basically impassable in the event of an emergency. So regardless as to how staff, including police and fire, determine to move forward, I just wanted on record to show that this driveway in its current configuration concerns me.
No, it's a fair point, Charles, and I'm glad you raised it. And, and so, you know, hopefully, hopefully the suggestions you heard will, will help mitigate that to the extent that we can.
Mike, it's, it's Carl. One thing I think we did for that Susan Drive application is require that they provide curbing, which I think they did Belgian block along the whole length of the driveway to provide an extra visual, you know, twelve foot wide car parking on it. Obviously you can't get another car around, so may want to, the staff may want to consider that also.
Yeah. And does the applicant envision any treatment of the driveway like that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, two things. First of all, the, both the fire prevention John House on August twenty seventh has reviewed this matter and indicated he had no objection and also the police had no objection. I would be more than happy to sit down and talk to them again and share with them Mr. Brown's concerns and if there's something else that can be done, we'd be happy to do it. There is no requirement for Belgian block along that driveway, but if the board feels it's appropriate, obviously we can provide it.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to say to Peter, we, we appreciate both of those things. I, I think that would help. Again, like I said, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that you went through township review and, and you got letters of, of no comment from both police and fire, but you know, if you're willing to confer with them again on the best way to, to deal, you know, whether it's with Belgian block signage or both in, in terms of, of how to make that less susceptible to, to parking, that would be, that would be great.
We'd be happy to talk to them. I think, I think the signage, if it is required, we'll do it, but I think it'd be ugly. The Belgian block would be a plus.
Okay, Mr. Mr. In regards to the sidewalk issue that was brought up, this is a, a situation where I think that the, the lot, the sidewalk should actually be constructed. This is an area along Amwell Road where there are presently intermittent sidewalks that do exist with breaks in the, in the continuity. I think it, it's, it's important to show that this is something that, that we're valuing here. I, I think we made a mistake with the religious institution years ago when we never required it along there, but we're very close to having a sidewalk for, for quite a long distance along Hamilton Street. In this case, again, I said, I think we should have it put in as opposed to having money put into the fund. Unless, of course, the township has got imminent plans to do that all along the
There's more existing sidewalk on the other side of Amwell Road.
Sorry, sorry, Ted. Can you repeat that?
Well, I'm, I'm just commenting that there's more existing sidewalk on the other side of Amwell Road in this stretch and in fact, most of the way between the Mott Lane and JFK Boulevard Card Road. It would be easier to complete the sidewalk on the other side. That said, are there any immediate plans to do so?
But, but going in the other direction, the sidewalk is on the other side of the street. And that's a busy enough street that eventually it probably should have sidewalks on both sides of the street in certain areas because there's no place to cross unless you walk to a you know, a light that's quite a distance away from either, in either direction. Yeah, if we don't want it, we don't want it. I, my feeling is we have a chance to have it put in. This is a case where I think we should put it in. If, if not, it's, you know, so we had
So, so can we remind the board members that the applicant had already agreed during my comment to construct the sidewalk during the time of construction on the site there? And so that was already agreed upon earlier.
Yeah, but the option was to do that or, or contribute money to the sidewalk fund.
Bob suggested that they, that he would much prefer the form being that it's constructed and not a contribution and, and, and the applicant agreed. So I think, I think we're all on the same page there.
I think it would be better to construct it. I, I I had two questions. One, did I miss it? Did the applicant say anything about any attempt to require that twenty-five foot strip next to it to diminish the variances necessary?
Yeah, they, they did, Ted. And, and, and basically, basically the long story short is they, they made several attempts. The, the ownership was initially unclear. They had a contract to purchase with who they thought was the owner that wasn't, turned out not to be the owner. The owners turned out to be a, a fair number of people, some whom are in various mixes of both deceased. And so they really couldn't go any further, but the taxes are unpaid and so they would be amenable to acquiring the property in a tax sale. But as this is not, you know, imminent, you know, the application sits as it is. But it, it sounds to me as though that the applicant would be willing to, to, to acquire it if it became available.
Good. The other question I had was that the plans, the, the sheet of the plans about tree replacement, they, it seems to show that they're going to take down practically all the trees and then plant new trees. And I would think that in the space between the two houses and in front of the front house, if they can save existing trees, that would be preferable.
Dr. Chase, we will do everything in our power to save as many trees as we can because the more trees we can save, the less we have to pay the municipality. We've tried to come up with a reasonable estimate of what needs to come out, but obviously it's in our best interest to save as many trees as we can because it makes both of those lots more valuable.
Yeah, definitely. Just I'm just sure that the plans shouldn't show quite so many trees taken out. It's actually better, of course, to have sheets written for what's usually called demolition, that shows what being taken out and then a sep- separate landscaping sheet that shows what is going to be planted. In this, these plans, there seems to be just one sheet trying to show both things.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. And I think, I think that minimum here, you know, be very careful with the limited disturbance that you actually do show on the plan. In between the houses or building, envelope, et cetera.
So I think to take, just to finish up that topic again, as has been noted, they are preserving, proposing to preserve the trees around the, oh, I forget what, what was east or west, but to the top and to the back and, but Councilman Chase's suggestion is that they also look into modifying it to save some trees along the frontage and between the two lots and the applicant has agreed to do that.
Good.
Thanks, Mark.
Especially since somehow the environmental permission didn't come in on these plans.
Okay, do we have any other board questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask Mr. Ford, I, I can't make you, I can't change your role to make you not the presenter. So can you stop sharing your screen? It might change it so we're not all looking at a blank screen. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. Over the course of these remote meetings, I, I'd say that the number of technical difficulties has been fairly, fairly minimal. So I can live with that. Any other board comments? Okay, if not, we can entertain a motion on this. Well, I'll make one and then we'll see if we get a second and go from there. So I'm going to move to approve this application with the three variances. That is, first, the flag lot division is not permitted in the R twenty zone. The buildable portion of, of lot nineteen point oh two is twenty-five thousand rather than thirty thousand square feet. And the flag pole width is twenty-five feet when the minimum should be thirty. As noted by the applicant, they are not requesting the other two variances in the planner's report. So those are the three variants being requested under a flexible C two, as well as all of the comments and testimony that the applicant has agreed to during this hearing.
Chairman, quick question. Sidewalk, no sidewalk?
Oh, yes, and the construction, the construction at the time of, of construction of a sidewalk rather than a contribution.
Thank you.
I'll second it if nobody
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafi? Jennifer Ragnar?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
No.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Errol Schmidt?
Yes, did you say it? Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Did you think? Our next application, maybe a bit or two for being over, also being hit by you, Peter.
Yeah, can we have five minutes so I can get all my paperwork together since I am not working at a large table? It's difficult trying to
difficult trying to put all my other stuff away and bring out the other file. Can we take a five-minute break?
Sounds good to me. Anybody need a bio break? They can, I have 8:43. Come back around 8:50 at the latest.
Mark, just a quick question on this next application. Did we ever get the engineer's report?
Yes.
Because I don't have it in my package.
No, I believe the engineer's report. Let me, let me, let me check. I'm almost positive I put it up on the website, though.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure the applicant will address it. I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, they have, they have, they have it and they, they will be addressing it. And they have some comments and an exhibit addressing the comments.
Okay, great.
Are we ready to go again?
Yeah, let me just really quick, Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to ask the public. I didn't say this before. When you do the raised hand function after you're done, if you can unraise your hand, that way I know if you have any additional comments on this application, I'll know that you have new comments to make. Thank you. I just saw it go down. Thank you, sir.
All right, so we're, are we ready to get started again, Peter?
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Peter Lamford appearing on behalf of the applicant. Before I give my opening comments, can we just confirm that all our professionals are here? And if Mr. Healy can check and unmute them? And I can't hear Mr. Healy.
There we go. Sorry about that. All right, I will bring everybody over. That was on your list. Okay, so I have your planner, your traffic engineer, your civil engineer so far, the architect, and your client, the applicant. You have a Seth Gersberg, but I don't think I see him on here. Sir Lamford, if he's on, I don't see that name on here as an attendee. Mr. Lamford? You're muted now.
I'm sorry. Is Ms. Dolan there?
Ms. Dolan I brought in as a panelist.
Okay.
The only one I didn't bring in at this point is the applicant Seth Gersberg. I don't see him on here.
He may not be here this evening, so.
Okay. All right. So then I brought in everybody else.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lamford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for site plan approval on behalf of Active SP Belmont LLC. The property in question is 230 Belmont Drive, Block 517.05, Lot 35.12. The property is 22 acres in size in the M1 zone. The applicant is proposing to construct a 152,175-square-foot warehouse with related parking, loading bays, driveways, stormwater management, and utility connections. There is only one variance that we will be seeking in conjunction with this application. And when I discussed this application with Mr. Healy, he didn't even realize that it was a variance because this is the first time in about 40 years that I've ever requested this variance, which is the length of the loading area where the ordinance requires 147 feet. And we're proposing 135 feet. We'll provide testimony from both the engineer and also our traffic consultant with respect to that one variance. Other than that one variance, this project conforms in all respects to the zoning ordinance, all bulk requirements, lot area requirements. And having said that, I will call as my first witness, Mr. Valenza.
Mr. Lamford, is, or one of your professionals going to be the presenter to put the exhibits up?
I think Mr. Valenza was going to put his exhibit up. And then I was going to then turn the arrow, so to speak, over to Mr. Tam, our engineer, to deal with his. I think it was, we felt it was easier that way.
Okay, so I'll change Mr. Valenza's role to presenter and he can present his screen.
Okay.
I have done that now.
Let me swear again quickly. You can raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Fantastic.
Mr. Valenza, state your full name, spell your last name for the record.
Larry Valenza, V.A.L.E.N.Z.A.
And Mr. Valenza, what is your occupation?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey in good standing.
How long have you been licensed?
I have been licensed for 28 years, practicing for 32 years.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that the board accept Mr. Valenza as a licensed architect.
Accepted, Peter.
Thank you. Mr. Valenza, you prepared the architectural plans for this project?
Yes, sir.
All right. And can you share with the board both what the building will look like? And talk to the board about materials, colors, and things of that nature?
Sure, I'm switching over now. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Okay, the building is a concrete wall panel building with painted surface-applied paint. We do a three-color paint scheme, a light gray, a medium gray, and a dark gray. A very neutral paint scheme that will blend with any potential tenant's logo colors, corporate colors. We try to stay neutral for that, for the, for the building itself. It complies with the maximum height requirement of 50 feet. At the tallest point, we're 48 feet, four inches. We apply the color in a, in more of a color blocking pattern where we try to segment the building to, to give it less of a massive appearance. Typically putting stripes and things around these buildings make, they accentuate the massiveness of the building and elongate it where we try to break it up into more chunks of color to sort of bring it down to of a more human scale. There are some clear-story windows on the, on three sides of the building. The east side facing Belmont Drive. And then the east and west side are the north and south sides. And those, those also act to give some relief and some rhythm to the building while also bringing daylight into the building during the daytime hours to reduce the lighting load and, and just make it a nicer work environment inside. I'm going to switch over to a rendering. This is a building rendering of the northeast corner. So this is what you, the corner you would see from Belmont Drive. And the office corner has the dark panels with a lot of reveals as, as the corner element with a canopy, metal-clad canopy that sort of wraps the corner and provides some depth and some shadow lines. And then there's glass, a large portion of glass under the canopy to signify the entrance. It's very simple to see where you, where you go into this building. And then some larger punched openings adjacent to that entrance element where the, where a future office will be for a tenant. I'll go back to our elevations. We showed signage areas. We don't know exactly what the signs will look like, of course, right now until a tenant comes along, or tenants. But the signage is at each tenant entrance, fully compliant with the ordinance in size, location. And the actual sign, once we know who the tenant is, will comply as well. There's also another sign on the east elevation facing Belmont. All of those, all of those are in compliance with the ordinance. We're not asking for any additional signs than what's already allowable. There will also be a monument sign at the driveway entrance. Again, fully compliant. Once a tenant is known, we'll know what that sign looks like for sure. But, but that's part of the, part of the application as well. Go ahead.
Mr. Valenza, where are the mechanicals going to be located for the structure?
Mechanical equipment will go on the roof. And what we do is we hold the mechanical equipment one column line in from the perimeter. And given the height of this building and, and the setback of the equipment, the parapet wall or the top of the, the top of the wall where it forms a parapet effectively screens vision to the panels. So they're, they won't be visible from the roadway.
Thank you. Is this building or can it be adapted for solar?
Yes, what we do is we, we design the roof structure so that it has the capacity to carry the load of solar panels. We don't put them on initially, but a tenant will have the option of putting them on if they, if they function for his purposes.
Okay. And you indicated that this building can be purposed either for a single user or multiple users. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in your discussion with the owner right now, we have no specific tenant?
That's correct.
And as far as multiple users, how, in how many ways can the building be broken down?
Right now, there are two, two tenant entrance entrances, one at the northeast corner, one at the northwest corner. And the two ends of the building, the two ends of the north elevation is where tenants would be. In today's market, I would guess that this is probably going to be a single-tenant building. But in the future, and market changes, it could turn into a two-tenant building.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Peter, just one piece of housekeeping, the, the rendering. Was that something that was submitted ahead of time?
No, that's the new, well, it was submitted, it wasn't in our original submittal package, but it's, 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 it was submitted early for the
The hearing.
Virtual hearing.
Understood. Well, we're just going to mark that. That'll be called Exhibit A1 for reference so that we understand what it is if we need to call it back again.
Great.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Vignello. That's all the questions I have of this witness.
Okay, Peter. In terms of the virtual rules, we'll just keep powering through all of your testimony and then, and then open it up for questions.
Okay, if Mr. Healy can take back the Okay, if Mr. Healy can take back the, or if Mr. Valenza can relinquish the presenter's status and we can turn it over to Mr. Tam, who will be my next witness.
Okay, let me go about doing that.
While we're doing that.
Yes, Mr. Tam should have that ability.
Mr. Lam, if you could raise your right hand for me. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And if you could state your name and spell your last name and give your address for the record, please.
First name is Tungto, T.U.N.G.T.O., last name Lam, L.A.M., from the firm Boulder Engineering. Business address is 30 Independence Boulevard, Suite 201, New Jersey.
Perfect, thank you.
And Mr. Lam, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
How long have you been so licensed?
For approximately 10 years.
And have you appeared before planning boards and zoning boards in this state prior to this evening?
I have.
Yes, Peter, if he's like the state of New Jersey and licensed as current as an engineer, we accept his testimony.
Thank you. Mr. Lam, you and your firm prepared the site plan that is the subject of this application?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and can you describe the site that we're looking to develop?
Yes, this is commonly known as 230 Belmont Drive. Can you see the aerial exhibit that I've shared?
Yes.
Yep, we have office exhibit A2.
Okay. A2 is the aerial exhibit prepared by Boulder Engineering. It has the site in the center of their screen. It is block 517.02, and it's lot 35.12. It's located in M1 zone. It is 22 acres. It has frontage on Belmont Avenue. And it's surrounded by industrial and commercial use to our south. It is a commercial building being used as a school. And the surrounding infrastructure is, whether office or warehousing, there is a vacant lot to the north. And that concludes their first exhibit, which is A2. I will move on to the site plan. This is A3, I take it?
Before you start describing the site plan, are there any environmental constraints on this property?
Yes, there is, and which is part of the reason why we have chosen this layout the way it has. We have focused our attention and activity along Belmont Drive and preserving and not disturbing the rest of the site. There's about just shy of nine acres of disturbance, and it's a total area of 22 acres. So what you see in, not the color rendering, not the proposed colors, which is their green highlights, which basically the L shape of the rest of the site beyond to the north and the west, those are being undisturbed. There are wetlands in there. There are streams. There are ditches, and there's just pockets of wetlands. So they're fully being preserved and not disturbed. What you see on the screen as the red line is the limit of the flood plain, and that was verified and accepted by the ICC.
With respect to the wetlands, flood plains, have you received a wetlands delineation on this property?
We have not. We have submitted. It was pre-COVID. And we understand that the staff at DEP has been personally furloughed in the month of July, and they are a little backed up. And we have spoken with Jessica at DEP, and she has visited the site, but she has not rendered a report or a letter at this time.
So any approval that this board would grant would be subject to getting the LOI from the DEP?
Yes.
Okay, and then you mentioned other permits. Can you indicate whether those are in hand or whether those are pending?
Yes, DRCC is pending because we do require county approval and local approval first. We do have Sussex, sorry, Somerset County Planning Board approval. We do have SED approval. And we have most recently received their TWA sign-off from Franklin Township, Sura, Friday. And that package is on its way to the county for endorsement. And then the next step would be to the state level for their treatment works permit.
Okay, with respect to the DRCC, they have reviewed your application, and the only reason they haven't approved it is because they can't approve it because of Franklin Township and Somerset County not having approved it?
Correct. We have county approval, but obviously we do not have some Franklin Township approval yet. And there are about six housekeeping items on it, and we have addressed those comments, and we submitted to them. And we have a electronic correspondent indicating that he has conceptually accepted those comments, and he'll provide further review within the next 30 days or so.
Okay. Can you describe to the board how the site is being developed?
Yes, Belmont Drive, we have reviewed it and looked at their bulk requirement and things of that nature. There are no variants being requested from bulk standards. The size of the building is 152,175 square foot. It's located centrally on the site in the developed portion. There are two driveway being proposed, one on the southern end, which is being used for tractor-trailers. For a warehouse facility, we are designing the driveway for a WB67 vehicle, which is the largest vehicle in the state of New Jersey. And we are also having a secondary driveway for passenger vehicles, employees. Basically, that is a 25, 26-foot wide driveway. Both driveways are in full compliance with the township requirements. In terms of improvements, the number of parking spaces being proposed is 105 parking spaces, and 96 are required. And they're located on the northern side of the building, which is where the entrance is for the building. We are planning for two office entrances, one on the northwest corner of the building and one on the northeast corner of the building. In terms of truck loading operations and truck court operations, 147 is required by township ordinance for two times the building, sorry, vehicle length. The vehicle length is 73 and a half foot, so you times that by two, you get 147. But that is large, and it's not very required from an operation standpoint. 130 feet is proposed, and 130 feet has been an industry standard for quite some time now. We have previously developed a warehouse directly across from Belmont Drive, and that same loading operation is 130, so it's comparable to the area. And we have done other projects of that sort. In terms of loading docks, there are 28 being proposed available and with two drive-up and drive-in ramps on both sides of the building, which is the southwest and the southeast side. Typically, for an operation of this size, and if there's two tenants, then one of the tenants would take one of the loading dock closest to the drive-up ramp as a compacter space on both ends. So we have evaluated that from a trash collection standpoint. And we have also evaluated all the truck turnings at each of the tightest spots, which is on the either ends of the building, inbound, outbound movements, and all four movements for the truck driveway. We have also looked at it from a fire safety standpoint. We have reviewed their fire trucks from the township, and it can make full circulation around the site. There is a 26-foot aisle being proposed on the western side of the building, and we don't see that being frequently used by anyone except for an emergency situation because trucks is not designed to make the left, is making to exit the site and enters the site off of the Belmont, and it's not meant to co-mingle with the passenger vehicle. Similarly, on the passenger side, which is on the northern facade, we don't see a need for the passenger vehicles, their employees to ever traverse in the southernly direction into the truck court. So that is really just meant for emergency purpose, and it provides a fire truck. And we have no comments from the fire prevention in terms of circulation. There are minor comments about looping their water mains, facilities, and things like that, fire department connections, adding some paint on their curbing to denote fire lanes. Those are all comments that we address as a condition of approval. And in terms of stormwater improvements, we have incorporated the comments from CME's review letter, which we received on Monday. And we have worked with your planner to enhance the landscaping on site. Previous, we are required to, 651 tree replacement is required. We are proposing 91 trees on site. Therefore, we do have a contribution of 540 trees that is required. In terms of landscaping-wise, there are 91 straight trees being proposed. From the initial submission, that is 128% increase in plantings. 20 additional ornamental trees and nine additional decision shrubs on site. There is another 40 evergreen shrubs, which is 233% increase from the initial submission. 39 ground covers and 30 ornamental grasses. And their 30 ornamental grasses is 67% increase from the initial submission. In terms of bulk requirement, this is fully compliant. Once again, just some of the key highlights is 15.8% is the building coverage, and 50% is permitted. And in terms of impervious coverage, 28.9% is proposed, and 60% is permitted. There are over 60% of the site being undisturbed as part of this development, and we're sensitive to that nature. What you also see in this rendering, in the pink colors on their secondary drive aisles and their employee parking area, we are incorporating a lot of the new stormwater regulations that has not been officially adopted and enforced by DEP and the township. Their date is going to be March 2021. But as a good practice and just, you know, caring about the environment, we are incorporating a lot of that improvements, which is what you see in pink, and those are the porous pavements. At the prior submission, we had, she had additional porous pavement. But in discussion with your fire engineer, that their main drive aisle, we have eliminated that, which is just L shape, which I'm piling with my hand right now. And those are some of the stormwater comments that we have been working on with CME. And in addition, we have formally delineated where their basin access would be for the routine maintenance, and they will be 18 feet wide, and there will be one for each basin. The basin directly in front, which is to the east of the building, will be an infiltration basin. And there's only collecting roof water, which is about clean waters it can get, which, you know, for a project this size, we're actually proposing about three and a half acres of clean water just because of the roof area alone. And that's being recharged in the ground, and that's designed as an infiltration basin. As a secondary to that, there is a downstream detention basin prior to ultimately connecting into a township drainpipe, which the township has an easement on that goes from Belmont Drive through the site to the onsite dish, and then traversed to northernly direction. Similarly, on the southern facade of the building, the township also has another drainage easement. And then we are proposing to extend it in this orange color and route it back onto their existing ditch. So as a condition, we'll provide a meets and bounds of necessary easements to your township for the stormwater pipe to be extended.
And has the stormwater management plan been reviewed by the township reviewing engineer?
Yes, we have lengthy discussions since Monday with CME. They have conceptually agreed to our responses and our revised plans that we've been working on.
And the plan that is on the screen right now was the plan that was submitted in conjunction with this application initially? Or is this a revised plan to incorporate some of the comments of CME?
This incorporates all the comments from CME. This is the enhanced version. For example, we have removed the porous pavement from the westernly drive aisle. We have removed the porous pavement from the northernly drive aisle. Those were some of the highlights from CME review letter. And in addition, requested a ten-foot setback from the basin. So we pushed the fence and also the grading further away from the property line along Belmont Drive. In conjunction with that, and in review of Mr. Healy's review letter, we have incorporated enhanced landscaping such as street trees every 40 feet, understory landscaping to create a lush frontage and that matched the character of the neighborhood here.
Okay, so since this exhibit was not part of our original plan set and was as a result of modifications requested by both Mr. Healy and CME, this document should be marked as A2, I believe?
A4.
A3, I'm sorry.
Aerial, yeah.
Now, with respect to the report of CME, you've indicated that this exhibit addressed some of the stormwater management concerns, drainage concerns, and it also addressed some of the landscaping concerns of Mr. Healy.
Correct.
Other comments in the CME report, which report consists of 10 pages, all of those other changes you can make to the plan without substantially altering what the board is reviewing?
Correct. Some of the comments are, I'm reaching out to the 911 coordinator. I think there was some confusion. This is not a subdivision application. It's simply a site plan application. Their 911 address has been assigned, and it's 230 Belmont Drive, and we'll continue to use that. There's some housekeeping, such as adding notes to the plans about as-built and things of that nature. Those will be added, and we are agreeable to it. There were two items between CME's review letter and what our office has designed. One of those items was the heavy-duty pavement. We had a site, state geotech engineer designed it for this particular location. It does deviate from the township requirement. So if a waiver is not being well entertained, then we'll simply comply with the township requirement. It's simply one extra inch of asphalt, so we can work with that. And other items that CME is deferring is the slope of their grading area beyond the parking lot. We are proposing a two-to-one just to minimize the disturbance and preserving the additional trees. We have received Soil Conservation District sign-off and review of their slope stability. So if the township is willing to entertain that, we would like to keep it as a two-to-one slope. If not, we can simply make it three-to-one slightly. We could probably preserve the same amount of disturbance, and the height of the retaining wall might grow slightly by no more than a foot. So it's really not visible, but we're just trying to preserve as many trees as we can, which is the part of the reason why we went with a steeper slope on the landscape area.
Okay, and you're in discussion with those issues with CME and will resolve them to CME satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay, we didn't touch on lighting. How is this property lit?
It is LED light fixtures, completely downwards, focus lights, dark sky compliance. There are building-mounted lights, and there are also aerial lights in the parking lots. And we do fully comply with the township requirements in terms of the lighting design. So no deviation, no waivers being requested on that.
And for the record, we have basically tractor-trailer parking on the one side of the building. There are no places for trailer storage. All the trucks or vehicles that come in would be going into the loading docks and leaving from the loading docks. There is not an area provided for independent trailer storage. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, and if you can, I know Mr. Valenza referenced the sign. Can you indicate on this exhibit or any other exhibit where the sign is going to be located?
The sign will be at the entrance of the driveway, and it is 100 square feet, Mr. Valenza. It will be designed at the time when the tenants has been selected, but the size is in full compliance with the township requirements.
And it also will meet the setback requirements. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and with respect, you reviewed the report of Mr. Healy dated August 14th. And you indicated you've had a discussion with him concerning the landscaping that is That is on this exhibit and this is this exhibit basically addressed some of his comments and or concerns?
Yes. It addressed all of his concerns. The only thing we cannot address at this time is the two and a half percent non residential. Development fee, which we agreeable to.
Are you not gonna write, you're not gonna write a check tonight?
It might bounce. I can write.
And all of Mr. Healy doesn't have any other significant comments, but we can comply with the tree replacement ordinance. And again, we're gonna put as many trees as we can back on the site. To the extent that we can and when we can't, then we'll make the contribution. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and all of the other. Officials, township officials didn't have any comments other than fire, which we indicated we can comply with. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions of this witness. My next, my next witness is Ms. Dolan.
Dolan, if you can raise your right hand for me. You sure the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? You're muted.
You got unmute?
You got unmute yourself. There you go.
I do.
Perfect. Can you state your name, spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please?
Elizabeth Dolan, D O L A N, Dolan Dean Consulting, 181 West High Street in Somerville, New Jersey.
And Ms. Dolan, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey specializing in traffic?
Yes, and my license is in good standing.
Thanks. You're accepted.
Thank you.
Ms. Dolan, you were retained by the applicant to prepare a traffic report in conjunction with this application?
Yes.
And what was the scope of the report?
The scope of the report was an evaluation of the overall traffic characteristics of the proposed warehouse and a review of access. Parking and onsite circulation. The study is dated May 28, 2020. And I would point out that it was based on the May. Site plan and when we get to the CME comments regarding the site plan. I'll address the changes that have occurred, but Mr. Lamb has given you the overview of the access, circulation, parking and loading. And I'll hit on that in my testimony.
All right, why don't you proceed and give the board what your findings were, both based on your review of the original plan and then also the revised plan?
Right. The proposed warehouse does not generate a significant amount of traffic. Significant is defined as 100 or more driveway movements in one hour. We're looking at about 46. Inbound and outbound movements during the busiest peak hour for the proposed warehouse based on the building area. That is comprised of approximately 10 to 20% trucks. And the balance would be passenger vehicles. So 46 vehicles. Entering and exiting the two driveways over the course of the busiest hour, not considered significant. And is not expected to create any type of negative impact on the adjacent roadway system. ITE and NJDOT require a specific analysis of intersections where a new development will. Impact by 100 or more trips in an hour. And we will be less than half of that level. So we're not talking about a substantial amount of activity. And as Mr. Lamb has indicated, the site has been appropriately designed to accommodate. The tractor trailers that are expected to visit the site as well as to accommodate. Peak parking demands for passenger vehicles. The, as I said, the original plan that we reviewed was dated May 2020 and had a slightly different orientation. The current plan, as Mr. Lamb has identified. Provides all of the passenger vehicle parking on the north side and the tractor trailer. Activity and bay doors on the south side. I would concur with the testimony that the 130, 135. Foot dimension is certainly appropriate and consistent with other plans that we've reviewed. For the maneuverability needed for the tractor trailers to get into and out of the loading dock area. All of the tractor trailer activity is separated from the passenger vehicle activity. Passenger vehicle activity on the north side of the building. With appropriate parking for potential tenants. We don't know exactly who's going to be here, but based on other applications I've been. Either representing or reviewed, I would say that this parking supply is certainly comfortable. And the two driveway configuration allows for the separation of the activity. For the larger vehicles and the passenger vehicles. So it's a very comfortable design. And consistent with other warehouse development applications that we're seeing throughout New Jersey. This is a very. Popular type of use right now, given the circumstances we're in. And so I would say that the overall. Design is appropriate for this type of use and the parking and loading is appropriately designed for the anticipated. Type of tenants that may occupy this use.
Did you also look at the site for? For fire vehicles if they have to access the site and and the circulation of emergency vehicles?
Yes, and I know that Bowler has also provided the appropriate. Vehicle turning templates and certainly the geometry is comfortable for. Those types of emergency response vehicles as well as the vehicles that will routinely visit the site.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. I have no further questions. Is our planner here?
Here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, can we have her sworn, please?
Ms. Capone, you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name and give us your address for the record, please.
Certainly. It's Christine, C H R I S T I N E zero N A Z Z A R O. Capone, C O F as in Frank, O N E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Having qualified in Franken and about 400 and something other boards throughout the state. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers. I teach planning and joining courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I'm an adjunct instructor. I'm an affordable housing special master.
Before, before the chairman cuts you off, I would propose the testimony of Ms. Capone as a licensed professional planner, Mr. Chairman?
Agreed, Peter.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Capone, you've heard the testimony of Mr. Lamb and Ms. Dolan concerning this project. And there is only one variance that is now being sought as a result of the numerous. Revision to the plan which deals with the loading dock. Can you opine on that variance, please?
Yes, it was a substantially conforming application with the M1 zone. As both Mr. Lamb and Ms. Dolan provided a foundation testimony for the justification of the variance. Specifically, Mr. Lamb talked about the fact that the size of our loading docks are an industry standard. He talked about the fact that he designed the loading docks on the warehouse using. A warehouse across the street on Belmont where are similar situated and similar sized loading docks. And Ms. Dolan testified that they are comfortable, but from a planning point of view. I think the board can look at the C1 and C2 statutory criteria for the granted variance. I think the C1 are applicable because Mr. Lamb did a great job of walking all the environmental encumbrances. So why put greater loading docks here and have more impervious coverage on a site that has environmental constraints if we don't have to? We can make sure that we function safely and efficiently. So that's why I think the C1 statutory criteria are applicable. In the absence of the C1 or hardship criteria, I still think the board can grant this variance under the C2 statutory criteria. Because I find that purposes of the land need to be advanced. Typically, I think criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land. Of the land. Mr. Lamb testified that we are. Having a substantial portion of the site as undeveloped. So from a planning point of view, I see no real planning benefit to complying with the ordinance size of the loading docks. And creating more impervious surface. I think that the plan is efficient and safe. As proposed and as testified to by both our site civil and traffic engineer. I think the application is substantial consistent with the M1 zone. The master plan actually talks about preserving land for industrial warehouses. And it shouldn't be totally sacrificed because the area continues to have excellent regional access to 287. So from a planning point of view, I see absolutely no substantial detriment to the negative criteria or to the zone plan. And I think we actually pass for the intent of the master plan, which is to preserve industrial development in certain areas. So I can unequivocally say that I think we need our staff to go through. For the grant of these variants under both the C1 and C2 criteria. And that there will be no substantial detriment allowed within the grant of the rules.
Thank you, Ms. Capone. I have no further questions. That that ends my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just real quickly, again to the public, at this point, we're gonna. Have questions from the board members. If any members of the public wish to comment, they can indicate. They're calling in by doing star three or by doing the raised hand function or by indicating. If you're calling from or watching from WebEx by indicating your desire to speak in the chat area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mark. So let's, let's. Go to the board first and see if we have any board questions for any of the witnesses for this application.
Mike, it's Carl. I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you. Regarding the the comment the engineer had on the 911 address. That needs to be confirmed by the police department. The letter will be required for any kind of water connection application. So I would suggest you do it now. This property is gonna have a meter pit, so the standard meter pit from the water department should be added to the plans and located on the. On the plan next to monument sign off of Belmont. And I agree, I agree it should be a three to one slope for lawn mowing, for mowing purposes. It's a lot easier than a two to one. And your clay core detail needs to be revised to comply with the township standard detail. That's all I have.
Thanks, Carl.
Alright.
Any other board comments?
I previously, I'm referring to using porous pavement. And I'm sorry that you had to cut back on it. But of course, that driveway around the back of the building. Has to be able to support a large fire truck. So. I can see that. Probably porous pavement can't be used there, but. I think this is probably the first application we've had where. The applicant came in with porous pavement. And now I'd. I wonder about that, the two to one versus three to one slope if. I agree a two to one slope would be hard to mow, but perhaps we just put rubbery on it. Instead of grass and it. And that will hold it together. Because I. The fewer trees cut down, the better.
Do you have any reaction to that, Peter? There's a couple of, couple of comments on the two to, three to one slope.
Well, you know, we, we can go either way. As, as Mr. Lamb indicated. We've been in conversations with CME. We'll continue to be in conversation with CME. I think we can share both Mr. Houck's comments with CME and also Dr. Chase's. And then we'll see where it winds up.
Yeah, two, two to one is a, two to one is a fun ride in the mower. And it's a riding mower. It's a fun ride. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think. I think Ted's idea of maybe, you know, if you want to go with the two to one and, and, and landscaping it in such a way that it doesn't have to be mowed. It's a pretty attractive idea.
Again, ultimately it'll be CME who'll make the call. We'll, we'll be glad to share. All of those comments and the board's concerns with them.
Yeah, apologize. I wasn't being clear earlier. The two to one is being landscaped with wildflowers. They are not meant to be routinely mowed with a lawnmower or ride on mower. It's at most to be, you know, with a weed whacker, maybe twice a year, you know, beginning and end of the season. So that was part of consideration for the two to one, but we can go either way.
No, I mean, I actually like that. I'm sure Ted will as well, like the sort of, a sort of wild. Wild sort of treatment of it where it's just. You know, mowed seasonally or weed whacked, like you say, seasonally rather than mowed constantly as a turf grass area. I, I think that's, that's fine. Thanks. Thanks for that. Other board comments? Before we open to the public?
Mr. Chairman, just one point of clarification. Excuse me if this was discussed. I had to step out for a second a while ago. The loading area, the width is 130 feet. Is that correct, Mr. Lamb? Not 135?
Correct. It's 130, 147 is required. And 130 is typical and it's also the industry standard. And we've also designed it for the warehouse facility across the street from Belmont Drive. And we have done for many other warehouse facilities.
Okay, now so obviously your testimony was with regard to 130, 30 foot width. Correct?
Yes.
So, so, yeah, and I can also, just for the board, I did specifically speak to Darren Nazzi from CME to confirm. If he was comfortable with that width and he did confirm to me that he was comfortable. He did mention one, I think it was the easternmost loading dock. He thought it might be a little tight there. So the applicant will have to work that out and prove that, that it's, that it works in that one, but otherwise he was comfortable.
Yeah, we also intend to use that spot for the compactor. So that's part of, part of the reason why, but we'll work that out. So.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mark, for the additional clarification. So. Let's go and. Open the meeting to the pub. We can always come back for any final board questions like we did in the last application. So. Make the motion to open the meeting to the public for comment on this application.
Second.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Mark.
Alright, so why don't we give a few moments here? I don't see any raised hands. In the attendees. I don't see anybody indicating in the chat, so we'll give that. The public a few seconds here to do that at this point. We do have, you know, a good number of people, but I'm. I don't know if they're members of the applicant representatives or the public, but this is their opportunity to comment. Star three, if you're calling in, or you can do the raised hand function on WebEx or the chat in WebEx. I think we've given them ample opportunity, Mr. Chairman. I'm not seeing anybody coming forward wishing to speak.
Alright, I'm seeing no takers. I move that the public portion be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public portion is closed. Any final board member comments? Or questions only once? Peter, any final comment from you?
Very briefly, this is probably one of the cleanest applications you've seen in a long time. We've basically taken whatever usable portion of the property developed to preserve the rest. The one variance has been. Carefully explained by both Ms. Dolan and Mr. Lamb and supported by Ms. Capone. I would respectfully request that the board grant this site plan approval with the one variance. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. So I'll entertain a motion for this from anyone?
I move approval.
Second.
Just one, one quick question from my aspect. How are we, are we, are we deferring to CFP regarding the slope? Are you? Had heavy duty pavement, they had the slope. Two to one versus three to one. Those are two items that they said they would work out with CME. There was some question over whether or not, how the board wanted to handle them. Don't care either way. Just want to know what the board's prerogative is so I can make sure it reads correctly when I memorialize it.
So for, for Peter, for the slope, let's go, let's go with, with. It doesn't really matter so much now that it's being, being treated with like wildflowers and seasonally, seasonally mowed. and seasonally mowed. So I would say that, you know, that's just up to CME. But I don't, I think the board prefers three to one, but I don't think, I don't think it's a hard and fast.
I think the board prefers two to one.
Yeah. Okay, fine. Then we'll go with, we'll go with two to one in the wildflower landscaping of it.
Well, let's say two to one unless CME has very strong objections. They should understand our comments and Mr. Lamb's testimony that it will be stabilized with wildflowers.
I can write that down.
And what was your other, what was your other clarification you needed, Peter?
They just asked, they had asked for heavy duty pavement in a portion. They said that they would work with CME on it. I had no problem with that being deferred to CME's discretion. I just need to know because they kind of said, this is what we'd like to do. But if you want us to, we'll work it out with CME. I don't care either way. It's just kind of like dangling out there. So, you know, make sure that we're all on the same page with respect.
They should work it out with CME. I mean, that's purely.
Sounds good to me.
Took the words right out of my mouth, Ted. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. We included the variance for the loading. So are we ready to vote? What was it? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and poll the board, Christine. I think we're good.
We had Dr. Chase make a motion and Robert Thomas second it. But then you all started talking again. So do you have to do something again?
I think, I think we just had a clarification by Dr. Chase of his motion. If Mr. Thomas wants to just second it again, we can, we can move to a vote.
Okay. Chairman, I'm sorry, Councilman Chase?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't get those details in when I made the motion.
I still second it.
Carl Houck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Okay, so motion carries. Application's approved. Peter, have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
And Mark, I'll turn it over to you for the work session, two items there.
Yeah, so I think I can get through this relatively quickly because the board gave me pretty clear direction on the master plan and the draft zoning ordinance. So I'll just go through the changes, which we emailed you the link, I believe, late last week. So you've had some time to review it. I'll just go through the changes real quickly. And then obviously, if you have any questions or suggested changes to it, we can discuss that. As far as the, so the first change in the draft ordinance is on page nine. One of the discussions was whether to permit assisted living and nursing homes in the proposed zone. There was a number of concerns about buffering and setbacks. Staff went over this. And our suggestion is simply to not include assisted living and nursing homes in this proposed zone. The main intent of this is for business and industry. That's the name of the zone. If we felt if assisted living or nursing home wanted to locate, and we have had a number of zoning use variance applications over the years, that they can go ahead and do that. They aren't inherently beneficial use. So they do have somewhat of an easier legal route to get a variance if they wish to locate in the zone. But we didn't want to undermine the intent of the zone, including these uses and having the issues that the board was concerned about, about compatibility and buffering, et cetera. So, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to just keep going and then we'll go for questions at the end?
Yeah, I think that, that, I see in your, in your note to us that you have the three, the three changes pretty clearly outlined. So why don't you just go through them all?
Okay. I forget which ones I pointed out to you, but on page, page 10, in the proposed bulk standards, those really, that's section 10 and section 11 with the regarding the setbacks and coverages. There really isn't anything substantive changing. None of the proposed bulk standards are being proposed to change compared to what you saw previously. The language that's highlighted in yellow was more clarifications that the board had suggested just to make it more clear of the different setbacks that are, that would be required. Page 11, based on a comment or suggestion from Councilman Chase, the language about the theater parking was simplified by taking that lang, taking out the language about vantage accommodations. We don't really know what that means. So that language was proposed to come out. Mr. Dyer, Councilman Chase sent me an email with a further question about that standard. He had asked whether one, one space per four seats, if that's appropriate, if it's enough. It is the existing requirement. You know, typically, I would, I would expect it to be more in line with a restaurant. Usually it's, I don't know if we're ever going to get a theater proposed, but nonetheless, it was a question that Councilman Chase had about that. Why don't we stop, since that's a question, Chairman Orsini, and see if board members have any comments and if Ted wants to comment on that? Does anybody have a comment? Ted, do you want to speak to that since it's your comment?
Well, I just, what I said in addition was that people don't go to theaters in groups of four and they probably don't walk to them. So that I think you have to, you'd expect that people would be going to the theater maybe in groups of two, which would suggest more like one for space, space for every two seats. Of course, it's kind of a theoretical discussion now since we don't have any theaters. We used to have a movie theater at Rutgers Plaza, but don't even have that anymore.
So, you know, I would suggest perhaps keeping it, making it consistent with the restaurant, one per three. And that's the same for banquet halls, et cetera. And again, if an applicant comes in and can convince the board that that's too much, they can ask for parking variance, which the board has been very open to granting when appropriate. Does anybody have any, anybody have any concerns about that recommendation?
And also, for the foreseeable future, theaters would only be allowed to operate at 25% of capacity.
Yeah. All right. So we'll move, we'll move along. The section about buffering, again, nothing is changed, proposed to change here. Substantively compared to the previous draft, we just added the clarification that in buffering areas, you know, specifically when a property needs to have access to the road, that necessary access drives could be in the buffer areas. But that would obviously be subject to the review of the approving board.
Oh.
So moving along to page 13, same thing. This is regarding the parking lot setbacks. Again, nothing substantive is changing. The same requirement that you can't have anything, can have parking, et cetera, in the front yard setback, buildings or parking. We just made that more clear based on the comments that we received at the last board meeting. Page 16 really is the more substantive changes. We added the section regarding existing residences in the business and industry zone, allowing existing, the ordinance would allow existing homes to be expanded to have pools, decks, et cetera, subject to the R10 zone. So we added that language in there. And then most significantly, we received a number of comments from board members, from several board members about having some design requirements above and beyond the normal, with the standard zoning. So I added 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 areas of design. A talks about the planting in the front yard, trees, ornamental landscaping, et cetera. B talks about adding landscaping and having an emphasis on landscaping interior to the site and trying to incorporate landscape islands within, and trying to break up large expanses of pavement in these developments. C talks about having areas such as loading docks, truck parking, outdoor storage, trash collection, et cetera. Put a view from the roadway to try to make it, put it in a less visible portion of the site and also to make them less visible if this property happens to be adjoining residential districts. The side of the building that's facing the adjoining roadways and visible from adjoining roadways to be designed and finished in an attractive manner and present architecturally as the front of the building. E talks about screening of mechanical equipment that'd be visible from roadways and also from adjoining residential areas and screening those with parapets, et cetera. F talks about non, trying to employ non-automotive modes of transportation, including safe and convenient interconnection sidewalks between parking areas and building entrances within the site and extending to the street. Sidewalks should be provided along the site frontage. Site plan should incorporate bicycle parking as well as electrical vehicle charging stations. And then G, for larger sites and or sites where a significant portion of employees are not expected to commute by their own automobiles, there should be appropriate accommodations for pickup and drop off areas for ride hauling services, bus and or shuttle. So, yeah, I think we tried to, as much as possible, I think we, the board discussed all of those issues at the last meeting and staff made, you know, try to make a good attempt at trying to address those concerns that you raised and incorporate that into the ordinance in the form of design standards. That's, that's basically it, Mr. Chair. So if the board members have any questions or comments, I'd love to hear them.
I just, I just commented that can we actually require charging stations at some ratio to total parking spaces?
Yeah, and this, yeah, Ted, and I appreciate it. Councilman Chase did send me an email earlier in the day with, you know, that comment, obviously. Thank you, Ted, for bringing that up. The other, the rest of your comments, I'll address. There were a number of editorial things I don't need to bring to the board's attention, but thank you for those comments and I'll definitely incorporate them. As far as that comment, I would suggest, if you recall, Councilman Chase, I think yourself and Mr. Brown had suggested that we do an ordinance addressing the requirements to have electric charging stations. And that, that recommendation was made pretty much right before COVID. And then COVID hit, and frankly, I haven't gotten to that ordinance. What I would suggest is rather than, just, you know, rather than, I don't know if one for every 50 or one for every 100, I don't know if that's an appropriate standard or not. What I would suggest is that we do a standalone ordinance, look into it a little bit more, find out what other towns are doing. I think putting it in this ordinance is kind of, I'll say, raising the red flag, if you will, alerting applicants that you're going to be, you're going to be looking for that as part of site plans. Maybe it's a, consider it as a placeholder, and then we can have a more specific ordinance following.
I agree. Better, because if we have a specific ordinance, we can also address multifamily housing, which any place, any multifamily housing where they don't have individual garages where they can plug in ought to have charging stations.
Yeah, any intent? Sorry, somebody else is speaking? The intent, again, my recollection of the discussion was exactly what you were discussing. It's not just business and industry uses, but perhaps in retail areas, perhaps in multifamily, so addressing it more on a township level than, than just this one zone.
Well, it's not so important in retail areas. It's places where cars may be parked for long periods of time, which is either at home or at work.
Yep.
But, yeah, if you have a large enough retail area that there's enough staff of the retail uses, they, they will be parked all day. And typically, I think the workers in a retail area will be a, they're supposed to park further away from the building to encourage shoppers so that charging stations could be appropriately located. But as you say, I think that's probably best addressed in a separate ordinance.
So any of the other board members have any comments or questions on the ordinance? And the, and the master plan draft?
I don't, Mark. I just want to, I want to, on behalf of the board, at least, thank you for, for your work on this. I know it's, we've, we've had a lot of input. And just, I just, I just want to thank you for, you know, working on it and accurately reflecting, accurately reflecting some of the discussions we have. I think, I think, I think this turned out well.
Thank you. Glad to hear it. Let me just see if Jennifer and Mahir have any comments. Let me just unmute them.
I'm, I'm good. I don't, hi, I'm good. I don't have any questions, but thank you.
Okay. And Mahir, do you have any comments?
I don't. I don't. I, I, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, so as far as, go ahead, Mike.
Is it going to go to, how is it going to go to council and then come back to us for formal, you know, and then try to adopt?
Well, what, yeah, first, the next step for the planning board is, is to have a public hearing on the master plan update. So we're going, we're going to try to have that, we're going to try to see if we can get that for October 7th or the meeting after that.
Okay.
And then, then again, yes, then, then the ordinance would go as a draft to council. Council would introduce it. It would formally come back to you. And you would provide comments if, obviously, if it's the same ordinance you just recommended. But there could be changes and you'd have the opportunity to comment on it.
All right. Sounds good. Do we have anything else tonight, Mark or Christine?
No, nope.
Okay. So I make a motion to adjourn. I guess our next meeting will be, when, Mark?
October 7th.
October 7th. Okay. All right. So motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Stay safe. Take care.